The hour is seven o'clock, and as Mayor, I hereby call to order a meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for this time and date. As always, we will begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Mark Haynes in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
Thank you. We'll note for the record that the minutes tonight's meeting are being kept by the city clerk, Cheryl Hebert, and I'd ask at this point that she call the rule.
Counselor Cheney?
Here.
Counselor Bowns?
Here.
Counselor Littman?
Counselor Littman is not with us this evening.
Counselor Haynes?
Here.
Counselor Hamel?
Present.
Oh, slipped.
Counselor Hosmer?
Here.
Mayor Engler?
I'm going to vote in the minority and say present tonight. Let the record show that five of six counselors are present for tonight's meeting, and our quorum has been established. Also, we'll note for the record that at the front, joining the council at the front table tonight is the city manager, Scott Myers, and our city finance director, Glenn Smith. First thing before us tonight is a matter of routine business are three sets of minutes. Special budget meeting minutes of May 28th were distributed at the next day on the 29th. No changes have been suggested by the clerk. You also have the minutes to our last regular meeting on May 28th, which I might add Counselor Hamel ably filled in as mayor pro tem for the mayor. Thank you. Those minutes were distributed also on May 29th, and no corrections were submitted to the clerk to date. And then finally, the special budget meeting that was held on June 3rd. Minutes distributed on June 5th, and again, no corrections or changes submitted by the, to the clerk. So unless there are any changes at this hour, I'm going to declare approved the minutes of our budget meeting on May 28th, our regular meeting minutes on May 28th, and our special budget meeting minutes of June 3rd. We have one item under the consent and action calendar tonight that is on page 21 of your packet. It's a request from the American Cancer Society to fundraise on City Park, notably Opechii Park and Clubhouse for the Making Strides Against Breast Cancer event that's been held there for years, this year on Sunday, June, Sunday, October 6th, 2019, from 9:00 to 3:00. A motion to be in order to approve the request of the American Cancer Society for fundraising at Opechii Park for their Making Strides Against Breast Cancer fundraising event to be held on October 6th, 2019, from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion. Counselor Hamel seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative. That motion carries unanimously. Okay. Citizens' comments for matters not on the agenda. This is the appropriate time tonight for anyone who is in our audience to address the council on any matter that is not on tonight's agenda. Anyone meet that definition? Ms. Pryor? Karen Pryor from the Bellknap Mill? Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor. Thank you. My name is Karen Pryor, and I am the executive director of the Bellknap Mill Society. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again on behalf of the Bellknap Mill and for your consideration of the mill's funding request for $100,000. I would also like to take a moment to introduce some of the supporters who have joined us this evening, including members of our board, Allison Ambrose, Kathy Calvin, Jill DeRusso, staff member Tara Shore, and other friends Rod Dyer, Paul Fitzgerald, and Paul Falvey. I would also like to introduce David Stamps, a longtime friend and supporter of the Bellknap Mill, who would now like to say a few words on the behalf of our organization.
Mr. Stamps.
Mayor, counselors, and the rest of you. And of course, Mr. Cheney. Thank you, Bruce. The Bellknap Mill is the soul of Laconia. It embodies all the stages of Laconia's life, past, present, and future. In the past, the mill evolved from earliest days of this nation's industrial revolution. The four-story brick building we see today was the original factory built in 1823. Moving forward, the mill evolved and grew as Laconia did. And as the nation grew, it succeeded through constant innovation and attention to its employees into the post-war period. Succumbing finally to the changing economy, the Hosery Mill closed its stores in 1968, leaving a mixed legacy of awesome brick buildings and a great melange of old wooden buildings that must have given the fire chief nightmares. Even as some in the city thought to bulldoze the whole area, some visionaries saw something in the Bellknap and Buzzill Mill buildings that they felt future generations would want. You all know the story of these visionaries, Peter Garrett, Yanis, Norm Weeks, many, many others who fought to save the mills from the wrecking ball. It is now on the register of historic buildings and made Time Magazine in the process. So even while downtown urban renewal showed the promise and pitfalls of the emergent urban planning ideas, the mill showed the way for future generations on how to reuse and adapt our historic buildings. The group chartered a nonprofit in 1971 known as Save the Mills Society, which was renamed the Bellknap Mill Society when it achieved its first goal. Their first mission was to maintain the magnificent building. Their second was to provide museums and community space for arts, meeting, lectures, archives, and more. This has been very successful, so much so that supporting the Bellknap Mill has been written into the city's master plans, and in turn, the mill has been the incubator through charrettes and public meetings of the Riverwalk, the Wow Trail, Laconia Main Street, Rotary Park, multicultural festival, and countless artists and artisans who first exhibited in the mill. Indeed, literally thousands of area residents have attended their fourth grade program, held engagement parties, weddings, met presidential candidates, mourned the loss of friends and families, and saw city council mayors and police chiefs inaugurated. In fact, it was dubbed New Hampshire's Meeting House by Governor Meldron Thompson. It is symbolized on the banners that festoon our streets in the downtown. And this is just a fraction of the almost endless ways the Bellknap Mill has touched our lives. Looking back over the history of the mills is to look back over the history of Laconia. From the family of J. P. Moran, who immigrated from Quebec and bought the mill in 1885, to the many working men and women who first found economic freedom, earning a wage to the knitted products that spawned hundreds of interlocking industries, including Scott &amp; Williams Laconia Needle and Hughes Manufacturing. However, it is not a given that a city will succeed from one generation to the next or one economic crisis to the next. Just as the mill contributed to the industrial success of Laconia in the past, today it is contributing to economic and cultural success of Laconia through its museums, classes, exhibits, and inspiring public meeting spaces. To this end, I implore the city to invest in the future of the mill, even as the mill continues to invest in the future of Laconia. The mill is a potent symbol of success for the city today, even as it works out how to save other symbols. Because there is another side to this bright picture, the same one, there's another side to this bright picture, the same one that the city has had to learn painfully, namely the high cost of neglected infrastructure. The city saw a dramatic jump in the costs of maintenance on schools, roads, facilities, and vehicles beginning 30 years ago because of a lack of planned maintenance. So the board members of the mill were no different than politicians in struggling to balance shrinking budgets and expanding needs by systematically deferring basic maintenance over 30, 40 years. This was dramatically shown two Decembers ago when we saw the 50-year-old furnace give way out during the record-breaking cold wave. You all saw and heard the generators and emergency heaters running for eight weeks. Imagine what that's cost the mill all by itself, and that wasn't anticipated. In this same period, the roof, cupola, finial, and exterior trim have also been repaired or replaced or are ongoing. Fortunately, a reinvigorated mill board and staff to not only directly fix these problems, but they created a strategic plan to ensure the mill's future for generations to come. I'm proud to hand it back to Karen, who will discuss this process with you, but I want to remind you of my opening thought, namely that the Bellknap Mill is the soul of Laconia today. Thank you all.
Thank you. Ms. Pryor?
Thank you, David, and thank you not only for your commitment to the mill, but to the city of Laconia. I would like to share with you why your support for this request is so critically important at this time. In late 2016, the Bellknap Mill applied for and received $50,000 in funding to perform a historic building assessment. This work was led by architectural historian and preservationist Mae Williams and incorporates assessments from Mashashik Turpin, Resilient Energy Group, Risfrosh Shumway Engineers, and Bonnet Page &amp; Stone, and was completed in the late spring of 2017. The 250-page report is the blueprint for the restoration and preservation of the Bellknap Mill, and is what made it possible for us to receive over $200,000 in funding from LCHIP and $390,000 in tax credits from the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority. LCHIP's mission is to the preservation of the state's most valuable historic landmarks, and New Hampshire CDFAs is committed to investing in statewide projects that will have a positive and significant economic impact on New Hampshire communities. The Bellknap Mill is recognized as both, an important historic icon for the Lakes Region and the state of New Hampshire, and also a key component to the future economic vitality of the city of Laconia. To quote Russ Tebow, "The mill returned to its vibrancy would be a major stimulus for public and private investments in downtown Laconia." The historic building assessment outlines the priorities of restoring the structure as well as its long-term sustainability. The first priorities were to replace the iconic monitor-style roof, the 60-plus-year-old boiler, and the replacement of the elevator for full handicap accessibility. These projects have been completed, and we look forward to beginning renovation on the exterior of the building this summer, including the restoration of the clear-story windows, replacement and painting of rotted wood, repointing of brick, site work at the entryway for water remediation, as well as the replacement of the mill's flagpole. And don't you love our new sign? Interior work is scheduled to begin in January 2020 with a focus on the third floor. We have successfully raised over $900,000 of our $1.5 million campaign with a remaining $600,000 fundraising goal. The Bellknap Mill is an example of a community's commitment to its history and to its future. Programming at the Bellknap Mill is flourishing. Finishing up our 23rd year of the Industrial Heritage Program, we welcomed over 1,500 school-aged children to the mill just this spring. Our STEM and STEAM programming is taking place year-round, and we are launching our inaugural Arts in the Park Kids Edition that will be taking place during the month of July. The city of Laconia has already demonstrated its commitment to the Bellknap Mill, and we are grateful for the collaborative relationship that we share with you. Your financial support of the mill's funding request for $100,000 is so much more than an investment in a building. It is an investment in our community and our children's future. Thank you, and I would like to introduce Allison Ambrose, Chair of the Board of the Bellknap Mill.
Ms. Ambrose, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Engler, and thank you for having us. Thank you, city counselors and Manager Myers. My name is Allison Ambrose. I'm the Chair of the Board of the Bellknap Mill Society. I'm actually co-chair and Chair of the Steering Committee. For those of you who may not know me, I'm also an attorney at Westcott Law here in town, and I'm here together with some of our supporters as well, my business partners Rod Dyer and Paul Fitzgerald.
Two former mayors, I might point out.
Yes, exactly. So we're thrilled to be here. We thank you for the time and the consideration of our request. We are invested tremendously, and when I say we, I mean everyone here in support of the Bellknap Mill, and particularly those of us at Westcott Law are invested tremendously in the Bellknap Mill and in the city of Laconia. You've heard a lot today about the long-term history of the mill and the historic building assessment, and what the mill has done in terms of renovations to date, and I won't rehash all of that, but I will tell you that I joined the mill in 2014, and some of you may recall that during that timeframe, the mill was actually in conversations with the city about potentially selling the building because we were having such a hard time meeting our operations and attending to the necessary building restoration that needed to occur in order to keep the mill going. I have to say that in that timeframe, in the last five-plus years, we have come such a long way, and I may not need to tell you that. You probably have heard today, and you have witnessed it yourself, that the mill has come such a long way, and that is thanks to the dedication of the board and the staff. We made the decision strategically to hire a campaign director in 2015, I believe it was, to help us raise funds for the roof. That was the one project, and since then, we have, and that campaign director, I might say, is Karen Pryor, who's now our executive director, probably the most committed person that I have come across and passionate person I've come across in my time. We have done so much in, I think, a relatively short timeframe, and that our work has been very strategic as well. We have done this as a phased approach to show progress and to make use of the funds that we have raised to continue on with the momentum. The mill is flourishing. Karen pointed out all of the programming that's going on at the mill, and that's only going to continue and improve. We do have a long way to go. We have $600,000 more to raise. We have some grant applications out there, but the support of the city would be tremendous for us. We have the exterior work that we're planning on completing this summer, and the city's contribution would go a long ways in helping us to do what we need to do and do it in the right way. So I will stop there and thank you again for your support and your consideration, and I would like to introduce one of our lead supporters, Bank New Hampshire's CEO and President, Paul Falvey. Thank you.
Mr. Falvey, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council Manager. Pleasure to be here. You've obviously heard a lot about the history of the mill. From my perspective, you know, probably the most important thing is that the bank believes very strongly in the mill, and we were the lead donor on the current capital campaign. We've also agreed to purchase additional tax credits, so I'll give you some words of support, but we're also, we've provided significant financial support behind it. I think the two organizations, although they have in some respects different missions, they both found their roots almost 200 years ago here in Laconia, and I think because of the work of so many people facing challenges, evolving to all the different challenges you face over the years, they remain two key downtown fixtures, and I think they both add to the texture and the commerce that goes on day-to-day in the downtown area. And for us, we love having the mill there, and I think it's an important partner to still be there. We love that it's vibrant and ongoing, so we're very supportive of it in any and all way, and again, we're glad to be here tonight to provide our support, so thank you.
Thank you. Was that the last speaker, Karen?
I don't know, Mr. Dyer?
For mayor, Rod Dyer.
Yes, yes, yes.
Two-time mayor, I might.
Your Honor, that's correct. Your Honor, and members of the council, and the city manager, and the senior city finance director, whom I have not met, so congratulations. It was my pleasure and honor to be a mayor of Laconia in the early 1970s when the matter of preserving the mill came up, and the city council at that time voted to act as the sponsor to permit the mill to go forward and to be saved. It's been my personal experience to have been involved with the mill for 40 years. I've seen the ups and downs. I echo what Allison said, that things were, it was a close-run thing four or five years ago as far as finances are concerned, but due to the staff and particularly the board and the leadership, they have done a remarkable job as far as bringing the mill along and actually pointing it toward a, what I think is a solid future. Now, I'm not here to ask the city council for a handout. What I think I would be asking you to do is to invest in the city of Laconia as you invest in other projects that do have a certain result, in the sense that I believe personally that an investment by the city council would be a signal to the overall community that you understand how important the mill is to this community. So I'm also mindful of your agenda, all five pages of it, so I will not go on and on, but simply echo what you've heard before. So thank you very much for giving me the time.
Thank you. Another former mayor, Paul Fitzgerald, welcome.
I am amazed at Rod's modesty. He didn't mention that as a young man, he helped put the building up over there. The mill has, probably everybody in Laconia has personal stories or professional involvement with it. In my case, 43 years ago, my wife Cheryl and I were the first couple to be married there. And then in 1993, my second inauguration was held there. And since then, a number of municipal functions and so forth have been carried on there at the mill. Much of what needs to be said has been said, so I won't repeat it. The mill's certainly important to the city of Laconia. The current board has shown that it has a penchant for success. They've drawn back from the brink. They are requesting your assistance with some additional funding that, as Rod said, would be an investment, not a handout. I think that that's a wise investment. It's one of the better buildings in the downtown Laconia area right now. I think the investment will serve to prime the pump economically for a number of functions, and would ask your support for the project. Thank you for your time. I know it's valuable.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to address the council tonight on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda? No? Okay, we're going to move on then to interviews. We have two interviews tonight, counselors, starting with page 22 on your packet. Lois Keeson, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that long. Seeking appointment as a regular member of the Heritage Commission for a three-year term expiring at the end of March 2022. Is Lois with us tonight? Lois?
She's not here.
Not here? Okay, we'll have to put that off and see if she still remains interested. Next up is Gail Ober. I know Gail is here. She is seeking appointment as an alternate member of the zoning board, adjustment for a three-year term expiring at the end of August 2022. There are currently four vacancies for alternate positions on the board. Ms. Ober, if you could tell us where you live and why you would like to be appointed to the zoning board, please.
I live in Ward 5. My name is Gail Ober. I served on the zoning board adjustment as an alternate for three years, ending in 2017. I left because of scheduling conflicts. With those conflicts resolved, I wish to rejoin the board as an alternate. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions, Ms. Ober? Comments? No? Short and sweet. Thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Thank you for your commitment.
No elections or nominations tonight. We have a whole bunch of public hearings that I'm sure is going to be a long line waiting to testify on each of them. So I would ask the counselors to bear with us as we get through these. Most of these public hearings have to do with the budget, and are required by statute that we hold public hearings and give the public a chance to comment on each of the 2020 fiscal year budget resolutions, including the sewer warrant, et cetera, et cetera. So with your indulgence, I will try to get through these as soon as possible. I'm not trying to discourage anyone from speaking. If there is someone who does want to address budget issues tonight, you're more than welcome to do so. So we will start with Resolution 2019-06 relative to making itemized appropriations for the general fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and terminating June 30, 2020. Notice that this public hearing was made available in the Friday, May 31, 2019, edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at Laconia City Hall, Laconia Public Library, the Community Center, and the SAU office. Proposed budget includes estimated revenues and expenditures and the estimated tax rate for the general fund for the coming fiscal year. I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:26 p.m. and ask if there's anyone in attendance tonight who would like to address the city council tonight on the matter of the general fund budget for fiscal year 2020. No? All right. I'll close the hearing at 7:27 p.m., and we'll move on to Resolution 7. This is a public hearing for Resolution 2019-07 relative to making itemized appropriations for anticipated grants for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and terminating June 30, 2020. Notice that this public hearing was made available in the Friday, May 31, 2019, edition of the Laconia Daily Sun, posted at Laconia City Hall, the Laconia Public Library, the Community Center, and the SAU office. Proposed fiscal year 2020 anticipated grant budgets include estimated grant revenues to be received during the fiscal year. I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:27 and ask if there's anyone in attendance tonight who would like to offer testimony to the city council with regard to anticipated grants. Seeing no one, I'll close the hearing at 7:28 p.m. And we'll move on to Resolution 8, which is public hearing for Resolution 2019-08 relative to making itemized appropriations for the sewer fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and terminating June 30, 2020. Notice that this public hearing was made available in the Friday, May 31, 2019, edition of the Laconia Daily Sun, is also posted at City Hall, at the Public Library, the Community Center, and the SAU office. Proposed fiscal year 2020 sewer fund includes estimated revenues and expenses for the fiscal year 2020. I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:28 p.m. and ask if there's anyone who wishes to offer testimony to the city council on the sewer resolution. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public hearing at 7:29 p.m., and we will move on to Resolution number nine. Public hearing for Resolution 2019-09 relative to making itemized appropriations for the water fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and terminating June 30, 2020. Notice that this public hearing was made available in the Friday, May 31, 2019, edition of the Laconia Daily Sun, and was also posted at City Hall, the Public Library, the Community Center, and the SAU office. Proposed fiscal year 20, excuse me, water fund included estimated revenues and expenses for the Water Department for fiscal year 2020. I'll open this public hearing at 7:29 and ask if there's anyone in attendance tonight who would like to offer testimony to the city council about the water fund budget for the next fiscal year. See no one coming forward, so I will close that public hearing at 7:30 p.m., and we'll move on to Resolution 10. Public hearing for Resolution 2019-10 relative to making itemized appropriations for the Internal Services Fund for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2019, and terminating June 30, 2020. Notice that this public hearing was made available in the Friday, May 31, 2019, edition of the Laconia Daily Sun, was also posted at City Hall, the Public Library, the Community Center, and the SAU office. Proposed fiscal year 2020 Internal Services Fund includes estimated revenues and expenses for the fiscal year beginning July 1. I'll open this public hearing at 7:29 p.m. and ask if there's anyone in attendance tonight who would wish to offer testimony to the council on the matter of the Internal Services Fund budget proposed. budget proposed. No one is coming forward, so I will, I will close this public hearing at seven thirty P.M., and we will work, move on to Resolution eleven. This is a public hearing for Resolution two thousand nineteen eleven relative to making itemized appropriations for the special revenue fund Motorcycle Week for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand nineteen, and terminating June thirty, two thousand twenty. Notice that this public hearing was made available in the Friday, May thirty-one, two thousand nineteen edition of the Laconia Daily Sun, posted at City Hall, the Public Library, the Community Center, and the S.A.U. office. Proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty Special Revenue Fund slash Motorcycle Week includes estimated revenues and expenses for the event for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. I'll open this public hearing at seven thirty, thirty P.M. and ask if there's anyone in the audience tonight who wishes to offer testimony to the city council regarding the Motorcycle Week Special Revenue Fund. Well, so no one's coming forward, so I will close this public hearing at seven thirty-one P.M. and move on to Resolution twelve. Only four more to go. This is a public hearing for Resolution two thousand nineteen dash twelve relative to making itemized appropriations for the Special Revenue Fund slash Ambulance Emergency Medical Services for the fiscal year beginning July twenty-one, July one, two thousand nineteen, and terminating June thirty, two thousand twenty. Notice that this public hearing was made available in the Friday, May thirty-one, two thousand nineteen edition of the Laconia Daily Sun and was also posted at City Hall, the Public Library, the Community Center, and the S.A.U. office. Proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty Special Revenue Fund for ambulance emergency medical services includes estimated revenues and expenses for fiscal year two thousand twenty. I'll open this public hearing at seven thirty-two P.M. and ask if there's anyone in attendance tonight who wishes to offer testimony to the city council on the matter of the budget for the ambulance emergency medical services. Well, I'll, no one coming forward, so I'll close this public hearing at seven thirty-two P.M., and we will move on to Resolution thirteen. This is a public hearing for Resolution two thousand nineteen dash thirteen relative to making itemized appropriations for the Tax Increment Financing District Downtown for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand nineteen, and terminating June thirty, two thousand twenty. Notice that this public hearing was made available in the Friday, May thirty-one, two thousand nineteen edition of the Laconia Daily Sun and posted at Laconia City Hall, the Public Library, the Community Center, and the S.A.U. office. Proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty Tax Increment Financing District Downtown includes estimated revenues and expenses for the fiscal year ending on June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty. I will open this public hearing at seven thirty-three P.M. and ask if there's anyone in attendance tonight who wishes to offer testimony to the city council about the two thousand and twenty fiscal year budget for the downtown Tax Increment Financing District. No one coming forward, so I'm going to declare this public hearing closed at seven thirty-three P.M., and we'll move on to Resolution, public hearing for Resolution fourteen. Public hearing for Resolution two thousand nineteen fourteen relative to making itemized appropriations for the Tax Increment Financing District Lakeport for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand nineteen, and terminating June thirty, two thousand twenty. Notice that this public hearing was made available in the Friday, May thirty-one edition of the Laconia Daily Sun and it was also posted at City Hall, at the Public Library, the Community Center, and the S.A.U. office. Proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty Tax Increment Financing District for Lakeport includes estimated revenues and expenses for the fiscal year two thousand twenty. I'll open this public hearing at seven thirty-four P.M. and ask if there's anyone in attendance tonight who wishes to offer testimony to the city council about the budget, two thousand twenty budget for the Lakeport Tax Increment Financing District. No one coming forward, so I'm going to declare this hearing closed at seven thirty-five P.M., and we will move on to Resolution fifteen. Public hearing for Resolution two thousand nineteen dash fifteen relative to making itemized appropriations for the Tax Increment Financing District Weers for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand nineteen, and terminating June thirty, two thousand twenty. Notice that this public hearing was made available in the Friday, May thirty-one, two thousand nineteen edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Public Library, the Community Center, and the S.A.U. office. Proposed fiscal year two thousand twenty Tax Increment Financing District Weers includes estimated revenues and expenses for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty. I'll open this public hearing at seven thirty-five and ask if there's anyone in attendance who wishes to offer testimony tonight to the city council regarding the two thousand and twenty budget for the Weers two thousand, I'm sorry, for the Weers Tax Increment Financing District. No one coming forward, so I will close the public hearing at seven thirty-six P.M. No, I don't want to screw this up. We have, what did I do with that piece of paper you gave me? Give me a second to find it here. The clerk handed me a piece of paper right before the beginning of the meeting. Question is, what did I do with it?
So, we can still do the public hearings, and we're just going to vote on, on the twenty-fourth?
All right, so we're going to hold these two public hearings tonight.
Yep.
As posted.
Yep.
But we will not vote on them until the twenty-fourth, correct? And the, the forementioned budget resolutions, we have until July twenty-fourth to approve, councillors, the second meeting of Aug, of July by statute for the city manager's budget. So, were there any changes in those two to what I have in front of me on the agenda?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, sorry. Got so much paper here. All right, so, two more. Public hearing for ordinance two thousand nineteen dash two thirty-five dash fourteen relative to amending chapter two thirty-five zoning article fourteen districts established. Notice that this public hearing was made available in the May twenty, two thousand, May thirty, two thousand nineteen edition of the Laconia Daily Sun and posted at Laconia City Hall, at the Laconia Public Library, the Community Center, and the S.A.U. office. There is no fiscal impact to the city for this item, and action on this item, as before stated, will be taken up on July twenty-fourth.
June twenty.
June twenty-fourth, I'm sorry. So, what this has to do with was, is the establishment of, that's been discussed at previous meetings, of the so-called urban commercial zone in Laconia, which is basically the melding of a whole hodgepodge of different districts that currently exist for the downtown area, and extending them all the way from the Belmont Town Line to the, to the Guilford Town Line, the commercial courts, basically Court Street and Union Avenue, and the central core of downtown. Okay, so I'm going to open this public hearing at seven thirty P.M. and ask if there's anyone here tonight who wishes to offer testimony to the city council about making a major zoning change with regard to the commercial district of the city labeled now by proposal as the urban commercial district. No one's coming forward, so I'll close that public hearing at seven thirty-four P.M. And finally, the last public hearing of the night is for ordinance two thousand nineteen dash two three five dash forty-five relative to amending chapter two thirty-six zoning, Articles Eight Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements, Driveways and Access. Notice that this public hearing was made available in the May thirty, two thousand nineteen edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the Public Library, the Community Center, and the S.A.U. office. There is no fiscal impact to the city, and again, this item will be taken up under unfinished business at our June twenty-fourth meeting. So, I'll open this public hearing at seven thirty-eight P.M. and ask if there's anyone in attendance tonight who wishes to offer testimony to the city council on ordinance forty-five relative to amending chapter two thirty-five zoning Article Eight Off-Street Parking and Loading Requirements, Driveways and Access. Does that subject interest anyone tonight? Apparently not. All right, well, that was, I don't know how many we had there, but it was a bunch.
Well done.
Yeah, yeah. Somebody else want to be mayor here?
You know how to open and close a public hearing, that's all I can say.
We just need you to close that last hearing, though, for the record.
I'm sorry, yeah.
Just need to close that.
So, I'll close that public hearing at seven thirty-nine, if my eyes are correct, P.M. And again, this matter will be taken up on the July twenty-fourth agenda, June twenty-fourth agenda, under unfinished business. Okay, the mayor's out of breath, but the next item on the agenda is mayor's report, conveniently. And two things I wanted to mention tonight. One is that at five-thirty tonight, with the council in attendance, we had an unveiling of the bronze plaque in the hallway outside the main door to this chamber in honor of former councilman Armand Bolduc. We had previously named, renamed last year the Council Chamber as Armand A. Bolduc, City Council Chamber. And so, this was, was adding a very handsome bronze plaque to the entrance to the city hall to, appropriately, I would say, mark that, that distinction and whatnot. And I encourage all city residents, if they have the time, and, and to make an effort to take a look at that plaque and, and remember, a councillor who served for thirty-four-plus years at this table, and a record that I think is, is unlikely to ever be broken. And so, it was great to have, I don't know how many people were there, I didn't count them all, but we had, it was a Bolduc family reunion, all his sons and daughter, and their spouses, and their children, and grandchildren. It was really, really wonderful to see them all here. So, we congratulate the Bolduc family and are proud to honor Armand's memory by, by unveiling this bronze plaque. Second thing I wanted to do is acknowledge that, to no one's surprise, this is Motorcycle Week in Laconia. And far and wide throughout the country, if not the world, Laconia, if it's known for anything, is known for Motorcycle Week. Very important to our summer shoulder season economy. And just want to thank all the people who are involved in, in sponsoring and putting on this event every year, and also urge all Laconia residents to be, to be grateful to have this amazing event in our city every year. If we were starting from ground zero and trying to figure out a way to attract tens of thousands of people to Laconia, we'd be hard-pressed to come up with something that, as successful as this event has been, the ninety-sixth year of the world's longest-running motorcycle rally. And we also want to welcome all of the motorcycle enthusiasts to our city for this week, and urge them to ride safely, and urge all motorists to be especially cognizant this week of the extra motorcycle traffic and, and be careful as well. Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, I'm going to call on Councillor Balance for a report on the Government Operations and Ordinances Committee.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tomorrow night, we had a hearing last week, a committee hearing with respect to the proposal to establish an historic commission. As, as you all know, that ran over in terms of time, and we've rescheduled it pursuant to the city manager's request, wise request in terms of getting this thing published to our website. The subcommittee meeting tomorrow at six o'clock to further take up the business. It is my anticipation, that, that document has now been published to, to the website for people to review for our consideration tomorrow for the subcommittee hearing. It would be my anticipation that the subcommittee would recommend its adoption by the council. I guess, and that would then go to the council. The council would then take a vote on to whether to adopt the historic commission and send it to the planning board. The planning board would then schedule a hearing. It would go after the public hearing, after, excuse me, after that meeting, there would be notice of a public hearing, which would then freeze applications for raising buildings, demolition permits or building permits in the historic district that's been proposed in this particular legislation. So, I think I got that right, and if I don't, somebody tell me. But the timing would be this. We would have the subcommittee meeting tomorrow at six. We would then, if the committee was in favor of that, then we would move that on to recommendations for the city council because of the timeframes involved. We'd ask for a special meeting to be scheduled for Thursday at seven o'clock for the council's consideration. The council then would make a decision as to whether that, to make those recommendations to the planning board. The planning board would then hear it in due course, or perhaps schedule a special hearing with respect to that matter, consider the, the proposal, and if the planning board adopted it, then, then it would be noticed up for a public hearing. So, that's the process. That's where we're at.
Care to make a motion on that special meeting?
I think it might be appropriate to do it now, in terms to schedule.
On the floor.
Schedule the special meeting of the council for Thursday at seven o'clock. That would be Thursday.
All right, Councillor Balance has made a motion to schedule a special meeting of the city council for June thirteenth at seven P.M. The only item on the agenda would be the, the consideration of a recommendation of the formation of a historic district from the Government Operations and Ordinances Committee.
Can you make it?
Councillor Haynes seconds that motion. Any discussion? All right, all of us in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in the affirmative. That meeting has been scheduled.
Okay. We'll take up the logistics.
Saturday, Thursday.
In terms of the planning board after the council makes a decision with respect to the adoption of the historic commission.
Does everyone on the council understand the route that's being prescribed here according to statute city ordinance, and that is that on Thursday night, presumably, the council will be asked to make a, to, to approve on first reading the establishment of a historic district. And if that vote is positive, it will be sent to the planning board for the planning board's review and recommendation. That is only a recommendation, so they will hold a public hearing. And then they'll make a, they'll vote to make a recommendation up or down that the ordinance city council is proposing would be adopted. If it, if it doesn't matter whether that recommendation is for or against, it will still come back to the city council, and the city council will have the last word. Everybody got that?
Yeah, and just as importantly, the, the notice of the public hearing will, will contain the language that's been proposed with some modifications, as I understand it, for notice of the public hearing, but that doesn't necessarily free the, freeze, freeze that proposal where it is. It's subject to further public hearings. There can be amendments, there can be other considerations, but the act of freezing the zoning ordinance at that, at that point in time will, freezing the proposition of the establishment of an historic commission would, would take, would take place.
So, that once the, once the planning board has, if and when the planning board schedules a public hearing, that would freeze any activity in that proposed district, including new buildings, additions.
It was subject to them to the requirements.
Freeze any building permits or whatever.
Building permits, demolition permits.
Or any demolition permits or whatever, until the council took a final vote on that proposal.
That, and that assumes, that, that assumes that the planning board recommends its adoption and schedules it for a public hearing, and after the public hearing, the planning board makes a recommendation to the council. But the council can still move independently to adopt the, the historic commission, but.
All right, may I ask you what the status of the short-term rental?
Before you move on to that.
Before you move on, okay, I'm sorry.
I just want to be sure that I understand tomorrow night amendments can be proposed to the initial draft.
Yes.
Okay. Yes.
Okay. So, I'm asking Councillor Balance, as chairman of the committee, what the status of the short-term residential proposal is.
I just had a conference, I just had a, a conversation with Dean, our planning director, Dean Trefethan. The proposal is now kind of finalized, ready to The proposal is now kind of finalized, ready to come back to the city council, or the sub, the committee, the subcommittee meeting for that consideration of that proposal. I, I don't know when that's going to occur, but the final, that, that final draft is ready, and when we get time and a breath of air, we can schedule that for a committee meeting.
So that report is ready now?
Ready now. And I, I don't know if, I, I think, Dean, you can get that out to everybody, can't you? Yeah. Let's just get that out to everybody, so you'll know what's going on. And maybe, maybe we can schedule that for next Monday, now that we've got-
We're not meeting next Monday. The meeting for the seventeenth has been canceled.
I know. We can, we can, that, we can schedule a subcommittee meeting for the seventeenth. We don't have to have a meeting, we just have to have a subcommittee, a committee meeting-
You want to do that?
And make a recommendation. I don't know, I want to talk to other people and, and talk to Dean and see what the timing is.
So we could schedule that meeting Thursday night, if necessary?
We could schedule it on Thursday, we could schedule it, yeah.
All right, so where do we stand on, one other item, where do we stand on the so-called performance zoning proposal?
Well, we've got one proposal that's before the council now. Where did we, we, we sent that to, to public hearing? Is it, have we had the public hearing? I forget.
The council.
Yeah.
Coming to the council next.
So it's that council now?
Next.
Okay. So it's that council.
So the planning board has already voted on it?
Yes.
Up or down?
Up. We voted on it last meeting-
Saw you making a signal like this, and I wasn't confused as to whether-
So, so we voted on that the last meeting, and the planning board voted to send it on to the council for consideration.
So that'll be on the agenda at our next meeting?
That'll be on the agenda for either our next meeting or the meeting after that. Let's just pack everything we can into the months of June and July. We'll do hearing after hearing after hearing.
You're a hateful little man, you know?
We don't have any other committees now, we just have the one committee.
I, I, you know, I, I don't know how I get to be chairman of these committees that are having all these damn hearings.
Mayor-appointed.
Yeah, I got him to blame. I got him to blame.
All right, any other committee business tonight?
Sorry.
Committee business, how about liaison reports? Any liaison reports tonight? No?
Well, you got the report is, in terms of what the planning board has done with performance zoning. Okay.
All right, we have made our way down to the city manager's report, Mr. Myers.
I'd be happy to go, I think you still might have skipped citizens' request.
Did I miss something? Oh, current agenda items, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. We are at citizens' request to comment on current agenda items. Is there anyone with us tonight who wishes to address the council on any matter that is on tonight's agenda? No one moving? Okay, now we're to the city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I wanted that little break, as councillor Bowles is always a difficult act to follow there, so I appreciate the thirty-second respite there. So you have included in your agenda for this month, the first meeting of the month, the financial and operational trends. We've kind of restarted the clock on our new construction value for the building permit year, which according to state law begins on April first, so we're two point nine million dollars in building permit value for the first two months of the assessing year, slightly ahead of where we were last year, but you can see not even half of what we were at two years ago, so we'll continue to monitor that. You can see the call data there for the fire and the ambulance. As Glenn had mentioned during the finance department presentation for the budget, welfare continues to be busy, although in terms of dollars utilized in May is down a little bit, not as strong as previous months, but we still anticipate for that budget to be overspent, and I've been, I've been preaching that message for, for many months now. On the bottom of the second page of the report, you can see the property tax collection, we're running right around ninety-nine and a half percent, we're compared to the prior years, almost a full percentage point stronger, so that's a sign of a, of a strong economy.
Oh, that's last year's taxes.
Yes. The bill that just went out now is the first bill for nineteen, yes. Also a sign of a healthy economy, motor vehicle registration, you can see that we are a hundred and one percent collected of our, of our projected revenue, even while increasing that number by a couple hundred thousand dollars from the prior year's estimate, so that is strong. The overtime numbers for all departments are listed on the third page. On the fourth page, that's the Parks and Recreation Facility request that Amy referenced during her budget praise, budget presentation earlier tonight. On the bottom of the fourth page, you can see an increase in the Motorcycle Week account balance, that is due to revenues being collected for various licenses and fees for this Motorcycle Week to date so far, and we'll have more being received during the month of June, that will show up in your next report.
Most of that money will be passed on to the Motorcycle Week Association?
We will also be needing to back some expenses out of there as well for our operations, and then, yes, there'll be the trademark monies. So this is separate than the-
Oh, okay.
This is blended all monies, but the trademark monies, we do identify, and we'll bring you a report of what was collected and authorize the council to do a transfer.
Like, if you were referring to all the registration fees and whatnot, not just the licensing fees?
No, it's all of it. Boat taxes on the top of page five, we had a nice bump in the month of May, and you can see that we've, we've collected almost eighty percent, just short of eighty percent of our revenue to date, and that's stronger than any of the prior years that are listed there, so not sure exactly what, what triggered that bump, but we're happy to see that. And the ambulance billing history, again, you can see the numbers coming in, we're, we're over eighty thousand dollars for three months, and just short of eighty thousand for a fourth month. So I think, again, our revenue projections are going to be on track for the fiscal year, even with a lag in time collecting, and we thought that the, the back page of the report that we included in the, in the update for you last month, showing the expense side, again, with just the month of June left, we're projecting to be under on the expense side of the ambulance as well, so we feel solid with those projections on that. I'm really, the most exciting thing tonight is there is no winter maintenance report or anything occurring in the month of May, so I think we're officially done with that.
We're not in July yet.
We are not there. And just following up, Mr. Mayor, on your comments on Motorcycle Week, certainly a shout out to, to my staff, your staff, pretty much every department in the city, when you think about it, is involved in this, and this goes on for months ahead of time with the planning and the approval cycle process, and, you know, our staff really put in a lot of extra time during the event, going down daily, not only for the life safety checks and the, and the food vendor checks and those types of things, but, you know, enforcing our trademark registration, making sure that, you know, vendors are paid up on their fees, and a number of things going on to it. So it, it really runs across the entire city, and, and they do a great job, and I just want to make sure that, I know you're aware of it, but I wanted to say that publicly tonight, it goes beyond just the, the police, fire, and public works folks that are visible and recognizable, it really runs through the whole city, so thank you to staff for that.
Thank them too. Any ideas, Scott, on the quantity of vendors compared to last year?
The vendor licenses, I think we're, reports over the weekend, we're within a handful of where we were last year. Some of the vendors will be showing up today or tomorrow, as they've wrapped up from Amerikade and, and rolling in, so we expect, you know, it to slow down to a trickle, but we do expect to be, be capturing a little bit more in the, the vendor licensing fees on that. So I would say, in terms of numbers, I think we'll end where we were last year, or possibly just a little bit above that.
Great.
Have you finished?
Yes.
Any questions or comments for the manager?
My, my only comment is, thank you for the last page on the EMS expenses for nineteen, I think that's, and just the overall management of the EMS billing, you know, it's good to see some of these numbers start to fill out as we get a little deeper into the year and get us closer to what, you know, what, what we anticipated, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else, questions, comments? Okay, we'll move on to new business. First item of new business tonight is under, on page forty-six of your packet. This is a request by the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention for fundraising on city property. The American Foundation for Suicide Prevention has requested the use of Opichi Park Field Sea and the Wild Trail for their Lakes Region Out of Darkness Community Walk fundraising event on September twenty-first from seven A.M. to one P.M. City council approval is being requested because this fundraising event has anticipated revenues above two thousand dollars. There is no direct impact cost to the city of Laconia, and the Parks and Rec Commission and the staff are recommending approval of this. So any questions or comments before we get to motions? All right, a motion being ordered to approve the request by the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention for fundraising at Opichi Park Field Sea and the Wild Trail for their Lakes Region Out of the Darkness Community Walk fundraising event to be held on September twenty-one, two thousand nineteen, from seven A.M. to one P.M. I have that motion, please, councillor Hosmer, second by councillor Bowles. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative, the motion passes unanimously. Second item of new business tonight is the establishment of the Laconia School District Education Stabilization Reserve. I'm going to call on the city manager to brief us on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this resolution ties in, going back a couple of years, with the city council's support and a letter of agreement or a memorandum of understanding for the city council to support the, support financially as a safety net, the five-year teacher contract that was approved several years ago, as a priority for the school board in order to help retain quality teachers with compensation versus some of them leaving after several years in Laconia to go to other districts where they could get a nice bump in pay. So the agreement was set with some benchmarks about if allowed, the allowed increase under the tax cap at any given year didn't allow the school board the ability to fund that contract without also taking care of other required needs within the school budget and capital items not being deferred, that the city would set up this, the safety net, if you will, to help offset any difference that, that may be needed. In that letter as well, the city council agreed that the school, instead of lapsing remaining funds at the end of their fiscal year into the fund balance, could also transfer them into the stabilization account. So we are basically, with the adoption of this budget, this will be the third year, if we're tying it in, paralleling it with the five-year teacher contract where the request was for that safety net. You heard from the school administration indicate that they are going to be requesting two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars if needed to come out of the school funds that have lapsed over the last couple of years into this account to help them with their budget this year, they're not anticipating needing any of the city funds. I did send an email out shortly after that meeting and shared with you that that current balance that the school has in their education account was a little over six hundred thousand dollars, if memory serves me correct, so by requesting two hundred and seventy-five thousand would still leave them a balance of around three hundred thousand dollars or a little bit more. The city's original agreement was that we were going to deposit five hundred thousand dollars into this account. For the reasons that I've just laid out, is that we're into year three, and even if the schools were, were to transfer some money, it appears they'll still have over three hundred thousand dollars remaining. It feels prudent at this time for the city to put in three hundred thousand dollars, knowing that if a worst-case scenario were to occur, a request could come somewhere down the line for the city honoring its agreement with another two hundred thousand dollars. But where we stand today, I feel this is a comfortable amount, it meets the intent of that agreement, with the understanding that, you know, worst-case scenario and, and everything didn't line up, you know, the request could come in future years to provide that additional two hundred thousand of funding. This is just going into a stabilization account. Again, it's required that school funds that go into their account get used first, and if and when, after the five-year period is up, this money hadn't been requested or needed, these funds revert back to the city to be repurposed for another need.
So if, if this passes, there will be two separate funds?
Our finance director, Glenn Smith, has recommended that, for that reason of identifying whose funds, that we keep the two separate funds. So when the schools have lapsed funds into their account, we know exactly what they've lapsed and what's being pulled out. So there will be two separate funds, basically for the same purpose, but it's understood that the school funds would be used first.
Questions or comments before we get to making motions?
Yeah, we're in, we're in the third year of the contract.
This, this July one will be the third year.
Will be the third year in terms of, and I think it's important that we make sure that we stay on track for that five-year period and the raises that will be forthcoming. I think that's really important. So I guess my question is, I don't have an issue about three hundred thousand or five hundred thousand, is it possible to, to change this figure to five hundred thousand until we're a little more certain of what the school contracts are going to look like in future physical, in future years? And if we did, if we did that, and it turned out that six months from now, we needed two hundred thousand dollars for whatever reason, could we access that, or are we, are we committing ourselves to the four, five hundred thousand dollars for the next year?
So a couple of questions there, yes, you could amend this to move the five hundred thousand in there rather than three hundred thousand, and yes, six months from now, you could back some dollars out. The contract is firm, then, when that contract was signed, it was a five-year contract, so the school board or the administration would have calculated out what their estimated impacts were, and what they needed in order to put together a budget that met needs of staffing and capital and operating supplies and all of those things. So the letter of agreement that the city entered into with the school, and again, non-binding, it was, it was a gentleman's agreement, was that if the tax cap did not allow eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in growth, this would be there as a safety net. So if we had a year where there was minimal building permit value and inflation was at zero, that would be a reason to tap into it. The tax cap for the school budget this year, I want to say, allowed them seven hundred and seventy or seven hundred and eighty thousand, somewhere, don't hold me to the exact number, but within ten or twenty thousand dollars of that, of that. So they only fell a little bit short of the threshold, and it wasn't a, you know, a robust building permit year, and it wasn't a hyperinflation year. So the thinking and talking through it is that even if the school requests two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the upcoming fiscal year out of their current savings account of six hundred thousand, it will still leave them three hundred thousand dollars sitting there. If the city puts another three hundred thousand collectively, you've got six hundred thousand dollars sitting there, and you really only have two more years remaining in the agreement, which would be fiscal years-
Have two more years of cities, of school surplus flowing into that account as well.
Or there could be some surplus going into it as well. So the, the fact that it's been lesser amounts that are being requested, and, and the school is, is just putting the request out there as part of the budget process, if they flow through until next year at this time, May and June, and through different changes in operation, their savings found, or revenue coming in more through something they haven't projected, they're not required to request that transfer. So I think actually, in this fiscal year, they indicated they were going to request a transfer, and they've been able to make do with how things lined up for them fiscally, so-
So without counting anything that might flow into it at the end of the fiscal year this year, if we approve these motions as presented by the staff, those two accounts would still total some six hundred thousand dollars.
Correct.
So, put another way, in order for more money than that to be used over two years, they would have the, the allowable increase via the tax cap would have to be in the four hundred thousand dollar range, four, four hundred thousand dollar range for them to use up the money that would already be in there.
Four hundred to five, probably closer to five hundred, but yes, you're, you're correct in your thinking.
So that's the, that's the risk we're taking by approving this, is that, that worst-case scenario, the tax cap would go, allowance would go way down, and they would end up only having a five, four or five hundred thousand dollar allotment, which would make them dip into and use every dollar that would be, if that happened, they'd have to use every dollar. And if it was even worse than that, we, we would have to pony up the money two years from now to that extra two hundred, a maximum of an extra two hundred thousand dollars.
Correct. So, so I think it's a, I mean, nothing is a guarantee in life, but I think based on there being six hundred thousand dollars, if this were to be approved tonight, that's very solid. We know inflation is running one point seven percent this year, so we're not in a deflationary environment, you know, we're still seeing the economy be strong, so I would expect a reasonable year, if not a robust year in building permits, but I think, you know, the likelihood of it falling below a half million dollars in, in a, allowed amounts under the tax cap formula is probably a, a very slim-
So procedurally, councillors, the first motion we have before us tonight on page forty-seven is simply to establish the account. Doesn't have to do with dollars. Second motion, which is on the following page, 48, would be to authorize $300,000 to be put into that account. So, what I would suggest, councilors, is if you wish to amend that amount, the proper time to do that would be under consideration of the second motion, not the first.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Scott, on this whole thing, should, should there be a end date? In other words, we've got three more years, two more years after this year. Should we have that account come with an end date on this verbiage?
It states the end date in the letter of understanding that was signed by the council or agreed to by the council and the school board, that this was a five-year period, and then funds remaining revert back to the city if they're not spent. So, I feel comfortable that we can certainly, in the creation of this account, you know, place that letter on file, but that was the basis for the understanding.
Okay, if we could place that letter on file, would that mean, so council doesn't object?
Okay, are we ready to get to motions?
Well, no, I have one further question. I assume that the school board is aware of this and that they haven't raised any substantial objections with respect to this transfer?
I don't know that I've gone through and said, we're only going to put 300,000. As I said to you, I think that's a proper amount to place there where we've got, understanding that we still have a commitment potentially in the next two years for 200,000. So, I'm not changing the terms.
You know, changing the terms, what, what will we plan to do with the $200,000 this year or next year? Would we plan to use it as, to fund budget items or...
Well, where this pool of money came from was the sale of property at Irwin that closed during this fiscal year. So, you can see in the third paragraph, the sale, proceeds of the sale totaled $509,000, which was placed in contingency. So, this resolution would move 300,000 of the 500,000. Your next resolution would move 100,000 of that 500,000 to the non-capital reserve account, which was the account that Counselor Hamel spoke of for some smaller capital projects that either we aren't able to fund within the budget or possibly crop up during the year as emergencies or unknowns, that we need to do something. And then, as we stand today, there would still be 100,000 of that remaining in the contingency account.
Burning a hole in our pocket.
That we would want to do something, if the council wanted to, prior to the close of this fiscal year, because that money was budgeted for, it was received, and if it's not reallocated or repurposed for something else, it would just flow into fund balance.
Okay. Motion would be in order to authorize the city manager to establish a Laconia School District Education Substabilization Reserve, city funds expendable trust account under the jurisdiction of the trustee of the trust funds, trustees of the trust funds. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion. Is there a second? Counselor Cheney seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please raise a hand. We have five affirmative votes. The motion carries unanimously. Next up, a motion would be in order to authorize the transfer of $300,000 from the non-departmental contingency account to the Laconia School District Education Stabilization Reserve, city funds trust account. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion. Counselor Hamel seconds it. Any discussion or amendment?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good with where we're at. I'm satisfied.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative. That motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up under is new business on page 49 of your packet is adoption of ordinance 2019-119-2 for the provisions of RSA 676:12, building permits. Mr. Myers?
I think we need to go back, Mr. Mayor, to the second transfer.
I skip one? Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have that one in my packet.
20C, non-capital reserve.
Oh, yes, yes, okay. I see one here. Okay, this has to do with transfer of contingency funds to non-capital reserve account. In July 2018, the city finalized the sale of parcel 367-71-26 to James Irwin and Sons, Incorporated. The proceeds of the sale totaled $509,155.83. This amount appeared in the non-departmental contingency account in the expenditure plan approved by city council July 9, 2018. It is being proposed that $100,000 of these proceeds be transferred to the non-capital reserve account, account 82-301-002-0000, to be used for unanticipated future expenses. So, a motion would be in order to approve the $100,000 from the contingency fund account be transferred to the non-capital reserve account, 82301-002-0000, to be used for unanticipated future expenses. Counselor Hamel makes that motion. Counselor Hosmer seconds it. Any discussion?
Yeah, would we now have $291,000? Am I thinking about the right account?
Yes, whatever the balance was in your, yes, 291 would be...
Now we have 290, okay.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative. That motion carries unanimously as well. Okay, now we get to building permits. Sorry for the, this is on page 50 of your packet, adoption of ordinance 2019-119-2 for the provisions of RSA 676:12, building permits. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, this RSA ties into what Counselor Balance was speaking to a few minutes ago about being able to post a land use change regulation and when it would take effect. Towns have this power through state law, because typically they're only meeting once a year, town meeting, items go through various committees and warrant articles and proposals, and as soon as they get approved to go on the warrant or the ballot, depending on what type of town they are, that freezes it. Cities need to adopt this as enabling legislation in order to do that, and I think the logic behind that is city councils meet regularly and can adopt zoning or land use changes at any point during the year. So, by adopting this, the, the trail of meetings that Counselor Balance outlined of it going to the historic overlay district proposal, going to the committee, coming to the council, if the council were to recommend it to the planning board, as soon as the planning board accepts it and looks to schedule the public hearing, that next business day is when the freezing goes in. And anything that doesn't conform with the proposed changes, either in demo or building permit, would be withheld at that point. If something were to conform, even with the proposed changes, we could go ahead and issue a building permit.
Long story short, for the freeze to go into effect, we need to adopt this.
Yes.
Everybody got that? Questions or comments before we get to a motion? Okay, a motion would be in order to adopt ordinance 2019-119-2 as presented for the adoption of the provisions of RSA 672:12, building permits by the city of Laconia.
676.
676:12. Counselor Cheney makes that motion. Counselor Haynes seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, I'm sorry.
Could you repeat what this is involving?
Earlier, when we were discussing the creation of the historic district, it was mentioned that when the planning board, if it gets that far, posts a public hearing on the proposed ordinance, it freezes any non-conforming activity in that district until the city council takes action. So, you can't come in between the period when it's posted and when it's actually passed and do something that would be technically prohibited by the ordinance. It freezes, it freezes the proposed language, giving the planning board and the city time to enact it. In order for that freeze to be put into motion into effect in the city of Laconia, we need to adopt this RSA. It's a local option.
And it would be effective immediately?
It would be effective upon something getting to the planning board and them accepting it and agreeing to schedule a public hearing. That next business day is when it would be posted.
So, these two, these two proposals...
So, without this, we couldn't freeze activity in the proposed historic district until the city council actually approved the ordinance.
And am I not correct that there's 120-day period? I mean, it's not frozen. We couldn't stall then for six months or a year. We only have 120 days.
So, you're suggesting the city has 120 days to take action, the council does?
Right, to complete the process.
Yeah, and that 120 comes from 120 days prior to a town or village district meeting. I think on our end...
We're the legislative body.
Right, I think if somebody were to challenge it, if the city were to drag its feet and just never take action on it purposely, just to keep it in limbo, I think someone could challenge that to the courts and courts would grant relief. So, I think we would need to show regular progress through our schedule and good faith through our schedule, which I, we're intending to do anyway. So, I don't think the 120 comes to us.
So, the freeze would be temporary, 120 days.
Right. So, so...
Counselor Hamel? Just thinking out loud here.
Does, does this then, we're not voting on the...
The district, no. We're simply adopt, if we pass this, we are simply adopting a local option under state law that allows us to freeze something once it's been posted for a public hearing by the planning board.
But you're, you're looking to freeze it within a historical district?
Yes, it would just apply only...
Which we don't have right now.
Right, right. But we have a, we would have a proposed historic district, and the very fact that it's been proposed by the planning board to public hearing would freeze anybody who has property in that boundary from making changes that would be contrary to the proposal until it's actually adopted or not adopted by the city council.
Okay.
To put that in a little different light, I'm going to look to Dean for confirmation. We don't have that enabling legislation on our books right now. So, any of the new urban district that we're proposing, somebody could come in right now because we aren't able to put the freeze on that ordinance, could come in and propose something before that's gone through the approval process, and we wouldn't have any say over it.
I mean, we all, we all know what this is regarding.
Yeah.
Right? And so, simply put, it says that if we're talking demolition of the church here, that the, the day after this, the planning board schedules a public hearing, a demolition permit could not be issued to a property owner in that district until the city council decides whether to adopt the ordinance or not, the district or not.
Question.
You could not get a demolition permit. If we don't pass this, then you could get a demolition permit right up to the time we actually establish this historic district for the final vote.
So...
Counselor Balance?
Yeah, question. Do we have to do these separately? Can we send this to the, assume the committee tomorrow sends the historic district stuff to the planning board, and we adopt this tonight, would recommend that it go to the planning board for its consideration and recommend...
This doesn't have to go to the planning board.
I thought it did.
No, this, this is adopted tonight on a first reading. It doesn't involve spending money, it doesn't involve bonding or changing fees, so this is one reading, and this puts it on the books.
My misunderstanding...
When you say first reading, are you insinuating that we need more than one?
No, this is the only reading. Sometimes our ordinances need to go to a second reading if they're dealing with fees or dollars or bonding, but this is not that case.
This is the final vote. There's no planning board involved in this vote.
No planning board involved, we're just, we're just going, all right.
But you're just adopting this RSA that indicates that when something gets posted, and it would be any land use change.
Which is a good idea anyway.
It would freeze it at that point.
It's a, it's a good idea for all zoning and planning uses that we do. That's a good idea, okay.
Is this RSA part of our documents now? Is it, is it in our books?
It's the state law, and it's enabling, so it's available for us to adopt, available for any city to adopt. But you need to take that affirmative vote that you want to have this available to you.
Good.
All right, procedurally, we haven't made a motion yet, have we? All right, so a motion would be in order to adopt ordinance 2019-119...
I have. I'm sorry. Counselor Cheney?
Okay, we did have motions.
Yes, and you had a second.
I'm sorry, so we're still on discussion. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up is a first reading of Resolution 2019-16 relative to authorizing the city manager to take any actions necessary to issue bonds for Court Street Reconstruction Phase Two and the Fire Engine Replacement Projects in the amount of $1,900,000. Mr. Myers?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item that we had brought to council attention a couple of weeks ago, knowing that we may not adopt our budget, which would approve this bonding until later in July as a last possible date. And because of attractive interest rates in this environment, it was brought forward, and there was consensus to kind of separate out the bonding issues now so that we could get those votes in place for the record while we're concurrently out getting bids, and then we're all set, not waiting six weeks from now for possible budget adoption, when this opportunity of very historic low rates may not be there anymore.
So, tonight, what we'll be doing is considering this initiative on first reading, and assuming we pass that, then we'll schedule a public hearing for our next meeting. Questions or comments? Okay, a motion would be in order to...
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, Counselor.
Well, I don't know if I should make this as an amendment after you read that, but I want to change...
So, we have three motions. Which one do you want to amend?
The approval of it.
If we're going to waive reading, then the second motion is the first.
I would say the second motion.
So, it would be the second motion. You can make an amendment.
Okay.
Okay, so the first motion be a move away, to waive the reading of Resolution 16 in its entirety and to read tonight by title only. Someone make that motion, please. Counselor Hamel, seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative. Motion carries unanimously. Okay, next up, motion would be in order to move a first reading of Resolution 19-16, a resolution relative to authorizing the city manager to take any actions necessary to issue bonds for the Court Street Reconstruction Project Phase Two and the Fire Engine Replacement Projects in the amount of $1,900,000. Someone care to make that motion? Counselor Balance, is there a second? Counselor Hosmer? Discussion or amendment?
Yes, I'd like to make an amendment. Hang on one sec. I'd like to make an amendment to the overall bond. I'd like to add in the bonding $125,000 towards a new city plow truck. There's two plow trucks now that are being used with welded frames. One is being replaced, I guess, as we speak, and then the other half of, they're ordering the truck, and then in the past budget, and then this coming new budget will be the, the box and the plows that will be attached to it. So...
All right, so we're changing the amount in the amendment to $2,250,000? Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
$2,250,000 for the purpose of adding a plow truck for the Department of Public Works?
Yes, I discussed this with the city manager earlier today to see, you know, how it would fit in, and I, I was thinking of doing something else, but he feels, I believe, well, I'll let Scott, if he wants.
All right, first of all, is there, is there a second to that amendment? Counselor Cheney seconds it. All right, discussion?
I would consider that a friendly amendment. I don't know whether we have to deal with it that way, but I would consider, Counselor...
Well, it's on the floor.
Yeah, okay.
So, Counselor Hamel did reach out to me today about our replacing, and I'm going to read the email or reference the truck, but a replacement of an F-550 dump truck, and he is correct that we're purchasing the truck with some dollars this year, we're going to fit it out next year, and there's a second truck that's also going to need to be replaced in the near future. And I think Counselor Hamel's point was that this is an opportunity on a 10-year bonding with very low interest rates to get them both squared away at the same time and maybe put us ahead of the curve a little bit. We're estimating it was around $120,000 to do the complete package on it, and that's where he has the $125,000. So, the amendment would be to, just in the verbiage, to add, you know, an F-550 dump truck and increase the amount from the $1,900 to the $2,250,000, and then that's fine to do that tonight because you're on first reading, and by doing it tonight, that's what, you would be moving forward and advertising for the public hearing. So, full disclosure for folks who are interested in chiming in on that. So full disclosure for folks who are interested in chiming in on that.
Any further discussion on the amendment?
Do we have to mention specifically the truck, F-550, or...
We can say a public works truck.
Okay.
I think the minutes will reflect what we're doing here with it.
Okay. Okay, so the motion as amended is to change the number in the original motion from one million nine hundred thousand dollars to two million twenty-five thousand dollars, and to add the verbiage that a third item to be bonded, if you will, paid for through the issue of this bond would be a plow truck for the Department of Public Works.
Yes.
Everybody got that? All right, any further discussion? All those in favor of the amendment, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. So now we're back to the main motion as amended. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion carries as well. Thank you. All right, next up is to move to schedule a public hearing and second reading on resolution two thousand nineteen dash sixteen as amended on June twenty-four, two thousand nineteen during the regular council meeting to gather public input prior to adoption. Councilor Hamel makes that motion. Councilor Bonds seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion carries unanimously as well. And finally, item twenty-F is on page sixty-five of your packet, and this is the first reading of resolution seventeen relative to authorizing the city manager to take any actions necessary to issue bonds for Indicott Street water line project, Court Street bridge replacement project, and sewer upgrades, Union Avenue and Lakeport Elm Street project in the amount of two million two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and to schedule a public hearing and second reading on June twenty-four, two thousand nineteen during the regular council meeting. Mr. Myers?
Again, this is the second part of that package. These are just based on their lifespan and useful life. We're recommending going for a twenty-year bond on these.
Is the Indicott water, is that to those houses that we're providing water?
Three houses, yes.
Great.
Any other questions or comments? All right, likewise, we need three motions for consideration tonight. The first is to move a, to waive a reading of resolution seventeen in its entirety and to read tonight by title only. Councilor Hamel makes that motion. Councilor Bonds seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion carries. Next up, a motion is ordered to move to a first reading of resolution RES two nineteen dash seventeen, a resolution relative to authorizing the city manager to take any actions necessary to issue bonds for Indicott Street water line project, the Court Street bridge replacement project, and sewer upgrades, Union Avenue and Elm Street, Lakeport Elm Street project in the total amount of two million two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Motion to...
Mr. Mayor, if I could, we're just noticing there's a twenty-five thousand dollar discrepancy between the staff report and the ordinance, or the resolution, so if you look at the resolution, those numbers tally up to two million two hundred and fifty thousand, and that should be what the request is for. So if you could just reflect that number of two million two fifty...
Fifty thousand?
Two hundred and fifty thousand, yes, please.
All right, so the motion, last line, the project total amount would be two million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Someone care to make that motion? Councilor Cheney, seconded by Councilor Bonds. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, and that is passed on first reading. Finally, tonight, a move to schedule a second reading and public hearing of resolution seventeen during the regular city council meeting on June twenty-four, two thousand nineteen to gather public input prior to adoption. Councilor Hosmer makes that motion. Councilor Haynes seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor of scheduling the public hearing, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative, that motion also carries unanimously. That is the end of new business for tonight. We have no unfinished business, so we are to council comments. Councilor Bonds?
I just want to make sure everybody's aware of this, but I had this discussion with some council members, but I'm looking for an additional twenty-five thousand dollars or thereabouts for code enforcement at the planning department, and I just want everybody to be aware of that.
So we want to add that to our list?
Yeah, but they're already...
I think it's already on the list, I just wanted to make...
We'll take that up on June twenty-four.
Yeah, I just want to make sure everybody was aware of it.
Councilor Hosmer?
And at our next meeting, I just would like to move the, move to the agenda, the request by the Bellknap Mill for their funding from the city.
We'll add that to the list as well, so we have three items we've added tonight.
But my understanding would be if the request for the mill, is it coming out of the budget or is it coming out of the contingency dollars or somewhere else in current dollars that are readily available?
Looks like it's a contingency dollars based on discussions you and I have had.
Under that scenario, then it would be a resolution to transfer that remaining one hundred thousand dollars out of the contingency account as the city's capital contribution to the Bellknap Mill project.
Could that not be, all this incorporated into one trailer bill, so to speak, like we did last year?
Well, we can, but the hundred thousand is sitting there in cash today. It's separate from the budget that we're adopting because those funds already exist.
You need two resolutions?
I think the budget trailer bill would be for the discussion towards adopting the fiscal year twenty bill. I think what Councilor Hosmer is asking for is a resolution like we did tonight to transfer three hundred thousand and transfer one hundred thousand. That would be the request to transfer one hundred thousand out of that contingency as the city's capital contribution to the Bellknap Mill, if I'm understanding it correctly.
That's correct.
So anytime we transfer funds, we need a separate resolution?
If they're moved into the contingency, I'd just like to have that paper trail for the audit purposes of how did this get funded?
Last year, we included all those, every dollar we spent extra last year came out of other accounts. None of it was new money, and we passed it all in one resolution.
I agree, and that's for the adoption of the fiscal year twenty budget. These dollars are already sitting here in the fiscal year nineteen budget.
So if someone else proposes transferring money out of our reserve account, we would need a special resolution for that.
We'd want a resolution to show that the council authorized transferring out of reserve account and going towards whatever purpose.
If it's a transfer out of another operational account, we don't need it. That can be, those can be bundled?
Yes, so what we'll do with you, if we're closing fiscal year nineteen books and we need to move some money...
And last year, for instance, I think we transferred money out of the fire department and put it into parks and recreation.
Right, but that was within the adopting of the budget process.
Okay.
These are dollars, we will bring you some housekeeping items at the June twenty-fourth for this year, closing of the budget, things like if we had overspent the winter maintenance account, we would want to transfer something to cover that. We've shared with you that the welfare budget's going to be over. Do we want to move some funds from one department to another to help close this year's books? But last year, with your example of the fire funds and the irrigation funds, those were in conjunction with adopting that budget, which is separate from using money that's already sitting in a reserve account.
Okay. Councilor Hamel?
I'd like the council to consider the hundred thousand dollars, and, you know, I don't know if it'll, what Scott will think will make the bookkeeping harder, but if we decide to do the hundred thousand, to do it in twenty-five thousand dollar increments over four years, major contributions for charities and things like that often do this. Bank of New Hampshire does it. They'll give, if they give you five hundred thousand, they'll do a hundred thousand a year for five years, so I'd like us to consider that.
What's it for? I didn't catch what for.
Pardon?
I didn't catch what for.
Well, the hundred thousand dollars for the mill to do twenty-five a year for four years instead of the whole thing upfront. I don't know what Scott will think.
So just from the accounting standpoint, that hundred thousand dollars is sitting there today. If we only use twenty-five thousand of it and we don't do anything with the other seventy-five thousand, it's just going to lapse into fund balance, and then what we're doing...
Well, unless the council decides to spend it on something else.
Spend it on something else, and then you're asking me to identify a change in the proposed budget to add twenty-five thousand for the mill, and you've already heard the mayor say if you want to add twenty-five thousand for the mill, identify where you're cutting twenty-five thousand to make that happen.
So you'd rather just do the hundred?
It's sitting there, and I think we got it from a sale of property, and we're, would be investing it in a physical structure property, and it's not being used for operating expenses. It's kind of one of those one-and-off type of capital investments, even though we didn't own the building, it's a one-and-off capital investment. We wouldn't expect that hundred thousand dollars to be a recurring expense year after year. I think using one-time money from a sale of property is good for any time of one-time use.
I was going to say, the city's got a lot of one-off projects.
So I, you know, we've got a lot on our plate in terms of what we're going to spend, what we need to spend. We've got the Colonial project, everybody here at the table knows my view on with respect to the Colonial project. I don't, I'm happy to do as much for the Bellknap Mill as we can. I want us to be frugally sound about this, so I don't think, I don't think we should take anything as a done deal in terms of whether we're going to give them a hundred thousand dollars or fifty thousand dollars or twenty-five thousand dollars. I want to see where we're at in terms of the big picture for the next five years if we decide to make a commitment to the Colonial Theater, I want to know.
Well, and along those lines, I think everyone's probably aware of this anyway, but just to clarify what you alluded to, by the twenty-fourth, Councilor Hamel and I, as your representatives on the Colonial Theater Steering Committee, will be coming forward with a report on where that status, what the status of that project is today, and very possibly we will be coming forward with a request for more city money. That number hasn't been set yet, but that's, there's definitely a possibility, if not probability, that the Councilor Hamel and I will be coming forward, asking for the city to put more money into the Colonial project, so that money's going to have to come from somewhere, too.
I just wanted to make...
Scott, this may be an unfair question. Is there any history to doing a commitment to something like the mill? I mean, any council history? I'm just concerned, would we be setting a precedent?
I don't think so. I mean, in some cases, you've supported, you, the councils have supported contributions to the WOW Trail, which is another agency, or supporting services could be going to physical...
Well, the WOW Trail is a public park.
Ultimately, coming back to us, but yes, but, I mean, we support social agencies, we support the work of the Boys and Girls Club, you know, we've made those types of things, and whether the Boys and Club, Girls Club uses it for operations or physical improvements to the building, I don't think we've ever stipulated, but I think you can certainly make a case for this being an important project. I do know that, you know, they are looking to raise a certain amount of dollars now in order to complete the replacement of the wood and the pointing of the bricks and stuff that is happening this year, and therefore I think dollars are important to them now versus, you know, a pledge over four years, I'm not sure, I don't speak for them, but I don't think that works into their business model based on what they're hoping to accomplish this construction season.
Okay, thank you.
Can I ask one more question to Scott? Could you find out from the school if there's going to be surplus, any surplus money returned? Because they're down to the end of their budget time also.
I can ask, but the...
If they would have a rough idea or some idea or...
I could, but the agreement, we have them, at least for this five-year window, is anything they may be lapsing would go into their education stabilization account?
Yeah, no, no, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Them returning that to those accounts.
I can ask, there's a lot up in the air this time of year with trying to close and get a number, but I can, I can get a sense to see if they can even put a ballpark.
Because they've done it before, you know, we roughly have a hundred thousand dollars we're going to bring back, so if you could get a rough idea, that would be great.
I will make that request.
Thank you, Scott.
Any other council comments? I think from Councilor Cheney, is that it? I'm crushed. All right, no other business to come before the council tonight, I'm going to declare the meeting adjourned at eight forty-three PM. Thank you.
Yes. Okay. Count of the two-step.
Yeah, yeah.